I'd like to call to order the Sparks City Council meeting of October 22, 2018. With a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
Council members Abbott.
Here.
Lawson.
Smith.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
Assistant City, I'm sorry, City Attorney Adams.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Crutz.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
The motion, how you doing? Chat, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, next is 3.1 Invigoration Speaker Pastor Malik Blythe, Victory City Church. So you're welcome Pastor. You'd all stand, please.
If we could all bow our heads. Father, we thank you for this special moment on this day. We thank you for your protection and your love. We thank you for protecting not only law enforcement, but the citizens of this city. And we ask you for your wisdom and your guidance. Although everyone may not believe the same, we thank you for believing in us. And we thank you for sharing your love towards us and your security and your passion. And we pray that peace will not only be upon the council, but in this room, that the city may prosper in all the surrounding regions. We thank you and we bless your name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor for those words, we appreciate that. You'd all remain standing, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Smith, would you lead us?
Sure, absolutely. If you'll join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, next is public comment. I have public comment cards right here. If you want to speak, please fill one out. We'll get you up for three minutes. First, I have Madison McCoy. Come on up, please. And then just give us your name for the record and let us know what's going on, please.
Okay, right now.
Yes, so you can have a seat and the microphone should be on, I think.
Okay. Thank you. Hi, my name is Madison McCoy. I'm a junior at Reed High School. And I'm sure most of you know about the accident that happened Thursday night after a theater show, where a girl was crossing the street and she had got hit by the driver who did not see her. And I've got told by many people, as well as myself, have almost got hit on bearing because it was so dark and drivers cannot see us. And this past weekend, I stood outside of Smith's for 10 hours and I got 2,657 signatures of people who also agreed that we should have crosswalk warning lights. Okay, sorry.
Go ahead.
And I am here to get permission, as well as ask what the next step would be for me to be able to fundraise for these crosswalk warning lights, solar plant ones. I got told it's from $10,000 to $30,000 per installation. So I'm just here to ask if I could fundraise, maybe see what I can do, what the next step would be for me to be able to get these installed.
Okay, Madison, the next step would be, what we're doing here today is public comment.
Mm-hmm.
So we're taking your public comment, we're not, this is not public discussion.
Okay.
So our city manager's taking notes, he knows what your issue is.
Mm-hmm.
He will contact you if you give him your contact information.
For sure.
I would say at that time, bring your petition with you.
Okay.
So he can look at it. As far as the legality of the petition and all that is up to our attorneys maybe to look at.
Okay.
But certainly, we can, you can get permission to fundraise.
Yeah.
That's okay, it's not a problem. So again, give your, your information to our city manager.
Mm-hmm.
He will contact you and sit down, talk with you, and let you know the exact process and what you need to do.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, next we have Kirk Rein Schmidt. Welcome Kirk.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Kirk Rein Schmidt. I'm a resident of the Village of Toscana at DeAndrea in the city of Sparks. And I'm here again because I believe this is the last opportunity I'll have to speak about you folks denying the change in the DeAndrea PUD tree, street tree requirement. At the last Planning Commission meeting, they said they were going to bring the subject up for approval at their meeting in November. I also saw that they had tacked another issue to this. And I'd hope that you wouldn't approve the other issue that may need approval and approve this tree issue along with it. Because there are residents that have never been surveyed as to whether they want the trees in our communities or want them to allow to be removed. We do not want the trees removed. Please give us that vote when it comes before you. Thank you.
Thanks Kirk, I'm one of those residents too and I haven't been, nobody's asked me whether I want trees or not.
No, no, that, that is a problem.
Okay, so again, we have your issue, but we have, we have not voted on that, have we? And the Planning Commission has not taken action yet, have they?
Not till the 30th.
Okay, okay, good, alright. So it's an issue that's coming up then. Okay, thanks Kirk, appreciate it. Kim Sizniewski. 39 North. Welcome Kim.
Good afternoon, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I just wanted to give you an update. My name is Kim Sizniewski. I'm from 39 North downtown. I, or we got invited to a meeting last week in the city of Reno. And it was very interesting. It was the Government of Economic Development Office, Matthew Moore and Patricia Herzong, that were giving a presentation on Main Street America program. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that program at all. But it was a, it was a pretty amazing presentation on what the program involves. And I, what I really liked about it is for every dollar invested in the program that they followed, 26 come to the city. So I think it's something to, to look at. And they have a lot of the goals that 39 North has. So it was, it was interesting to get to hear this. The legislature last, in 2017, established Nevada Main Street program. So there's a lot of information out there that I think is accessible that I'm certainly going to research and things that would help with what we're doing in 39 North. And I don't know if I was supposed to stay at this meeting, but I stayed at this meeting and it was really interesting because they have created a downtown Reno partnership. It's called Reno Business Improvement District that they've put together fairly recently. And so I got to be an hour in that meeting. I was pretty sure I was the only Sparks resident there. And what was interesting about it, they had a lot of the city leaders in that, in that meeting, but also a lot of the leaders from the community. And they're coming together to create this district and make things happen. So I, I think it's definitely something that we can learn from and I was so glad that I got to be part of that. 39 North Pole is coming up and it's our event that is in December 6th and 7th and 8th. The Christmas elves are Angela Handler from Locatile and Lisa Jansen from One Nevada. And they're putting this, they're the leads of putting this all together. And we are so happy to report that businesses have really gotten together and supported this event. Just two of our new sponsors is Q and D Construction and D.R. Horton. So we're thrilled that they're on board with us. We also have an event called Griswold Challenge. It's only $100 and we're asking businesses to put together booths that support their businesses and they can promote what they do. And it's also a team building, building challenge to be able to put something together like that. Thole Fence won last year. And my company does the Christmas Story and then we did Stranger Things, which was a pretty big hit last year. I don't know how we're going to top those two. And what we're looking for is volunteers because it's, it's a big event. It's all, as you know, all nonprofit. We don't pay anybody, it's all volunteer. And it's the setup and take down and any community organizations that are looking to get some hours in, we're, we're interested in talking to you. Oh, that was it, that was, that was that.
Well, thank you very much. And, and I know Nevada League of Cities has been involved with the Main Street Project. And I don't know where our staff is with that, but I know we've looked at it before. And the other thing is, I think we, you know, what it takes to get together with a, with a downtown district and to do something, have the businesses come and talk to us. And as soon as they talk to us enough, then the politicians and the elected people will show up. And we can do a public-private co, uh, uh, thing like Reno wants to do. I don't think it's a big problem, but here again, it costs money, it's not free. And we've got to get the businesses signed up that want to put some money into it too, along with the city, so.
It's definitely a partnership.
Yep, exactly. So keep pushing us and sooner or later you'll get some action.
Okay, thank you.
And it's easy for me to say because I won't be here. Thanks though for coming, I appreciate it. And we really appreciate 39 North, believe me, we appreciate what you're doing. Next is Jeff Church.
Good afternoon, folks. Yes, folks, my name is Jeff Church. I'm a candidate for the Washoe County School Board in this district. And I run a website, renotaxrevolt.com. And that's significant because it's always a pleasure to be here in Sparks, which is a well-run city who uses our tax funds wisely. And I wasn't going to comment, but I too attended a meeting on the Business Improvement District in Reno. It is paid for with property tax. They raised our taxes if you live in the downtown area. If you don't pay your tax, they take your home away. It is more than a partnership, it is a tax. The first thing the business district did was cut the funding for Reno Police downtown in half. So, there's two sides to the story, but let me move on. I run a group opposed to WC1 that'll raise your property taxes above the 3% cap. And our website is called TaxYourselfNotMe.com. So why am I here? The other people, the other side, StopRiverFlooding.com, on their website, please Google it now, look it up, uses the Sparks City logo and your names, your information, that you, the city of Sparks, endorses WC1. Please tell me it's not true. It specifically says "City of Sparks", and it specifically says "City Council", and it specifically uses the Sparks logo. Please, I've looked at some minutes, I can find no evidence in any open meeting that you ever endorsed WC1. And I've spoken to people that are in this room today, and I won't mention names, that have told me they're not aware of anything where you supported WC1. So A, please don't. We already pay sales tax for flood control, over $100 million since 1998 when it was inceptioned. And we don't need more taxes. And if you want to do it as your private self, that's great. But please, get ahold of these folks that are deceptive. Tell them to cease and desist. Get your city attorney on it. Do whatever you have to do, but it's unfair to me and the election, to our side, that we don't claim endorsements by people that did not endorse us. And they shouldn't either. And NRS 2A1A you may want to look at, as well as various other election laws that they may be in violation of. So please, please, don't let this go unanswered. And finally, I thank you for your electric vehicle parking spaces out there. I'm parked out there right now. And from time to time, vehicles poach there that are not electric. And you have signs there, so I urge you to enforce your Sparks Municipal Code. I had it written down already for a handout and it's sitting on my desk at home, doing no good. But I did speak to Mr. Chad Adams about it and I appreciate, what a gentleman, how responsive that he got back to me. And he's looking into it, but you as a council may want to look into some other ordinances or posting a sign that tells them they may be cited or towed. Thank you very much and have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Church. Uh, next is Judy Price and Tracy Copeland. Welcome ladies.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I'm Tracy Copeland, I'm the President of Sierra Nevada Donor Awareness. This is Judy Price, the Vice President of Sierra Nevada Donor Awareness. For the last 11 years, we've held the Donor Walk at the Sparks Marina, or beautiful Sparks Marina, the third Sunday of September. And each and every year, Mayor Martini has come out to kick off our walk with a proclamation. The Donor Walk seeks to honor those that have given the gift of life, celebrate with those like myself who have received the gift of life, and recognize those that are still waiting. So we truly appreciate your support, Mayor Martini. It's our understanding that this will be your final term. So we will miss you terribly. We thank you for your support. We thank you for the beautiful Sparks Marina. We're so glad that you will still come. And we just want to come and thank you for the years that you've come out and supported us. And we have a few gifts, we have a gift for Mayor Martini. And we'd like to give you all just a little bit of what we do as we honor our donors and our donor families at the walk. And I'll leave you with this quote, unless my sister has more to add. "Some people walk in our lives for just a moment, but stay in our hearts forever."
Thank you for the opportunity to come here before you and talk just a little bit about Sierra Nevada Donor Awareness. And we really do appreciate the fact that you have such an amazing venue that attracts so many people to come and join our walk. It's a beautiful, it's a beautiful morning in September, for sure. And we just wanted to thank you for all your assistance and your support.
Well, thank you ladies for what you guys do. I mean, I started out 11 years ago. The first one I went to was 300, 400, 500 people maybe. And I've watched it over 11 years grow and grow and grow and now it's huge. And you guys get a lot of people there, you're getting more sponsors every year, which is very good. So I appreciate what you do for the donors of this, of this area and the awareness you bring to your, your cause and stuff. And it's, it's really, it's really a great thing. So thank you for doing it, it's a great effort.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hey Judy. Okay, I have one more card, Alan Olive. Welcome Alan, how are you?
You're great Mayor, how are you?
Good.
My name's Alan Olive, I'm the CEO for Northern Nevada Medical Center. It's the only hospital in Sparks, proudly to state so. We're here to honor actually Mayor Martini. Mayor Martini's been on our board for a long time. And through his leadership and our board's leadership, Northern Nevada Medical Center has not only been rated the highest in quality and patient satisfaction and safety in the entire state, but it continues to grow. Mayor Martini's been there from the forefront in supporting the cause of healthcare. He's been there in the forefront of supporting patient experience and safety, as well as supporting our medical staff, our nurses, and everyone. Recently, we've undergone some expansions at Northern Nevada. We appreciate the city staff for their support, for helping us go through those, which will add more patient beds, parking, surgery, and, and many other things as we go forward. But we're here to honor you, Mr. Mayor. It's, so.
You're killing me, you know?
So our, our statement, our why statement for our hosp and our health system is honoring life's journey. And I think that's a very apropos for you, Mr. Mayor, to honor your journey. And we appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you. You know, I see you put a parking lot up there finally. Desperately needed, if people park it everywhere up there, so. I know it's getting busy here and you guys are doing very well and keep up the good work. And I know you're expanding, which I'm glad to see our, our Sparks Hospital, the only one here, is expanding, so we appreciate that too, Alan, and all you've done. And since you've been there, it's, things have picked up quite a bit, so.
Thank you Mayor. What I'd like to do is our team and anybody that's like to stand and applaud you.
Thanks Alan, I appreciate that.
Thank you, and again, we look forward to any, I'm glad I didn't get gonged, any other support from the city as we continue our journey forward, so thank you. Like to present you with a couple items. One is a honoring life's journey item. And then also a plaque, honoring life's journey, Mayor Martini, from 2008 to 2018. Thank you for your service as a Board of Governor Member for Northern Nevada Medical Center. And we appreciate you in honoring life's journey.
Thanks Alan, I appreciate that. Thanks folks, appreciate that too.
Oh, the plaque, yeah, let's do that.
You want to come up here Alan?
Sure, thank you.
We'll get out of the way. I'd stand up, but it's difficult. Don't put it on your face. Thanks Alan, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you sir, appreciate it. Okay, anyone else for public comment? Okay, thank you, yes.
Mayor?
Yes, come on down sir. Just give us your, state your name for the record. And then fill out one of our cards, please, with, for the, just when you're, when you're done.
Where, where are they?
Just, just go ahead and say your comment, give your name, and then you can do it afterwards.
Okay. Thank you, sorry, I, uh, my name is Tom Bowner. I'm a teacher at Reed High School. But I am here as a parent and concerned citizen. I want to piggyback on what Madison said earlier. The young lady that died was one of my students, so it's a little tough, but, it seems to me, and there's a lot that I don't know about, that you guys are all much more privy to than I am. So I, I, please apologize my ignorance about some of that. But if that $10,000 for those blinking crosswalks is a true cost, and there's three crosswalks there, it's pretty easy math, it's about $30,000. But it seems to me that that is pittance compared to what that young woman's family is going through, what the students at Reed High School are going through. It has been a very somber couple of days there. And I can't help but think that if we have much more, many more of these types of accidents, that there's going to be a lawsuit that's going to come down from that. And again, I, I would think that that would be much more, much more of a financial burden for the city of Sparks than to pay to put those in. Myself personally, I've crossed that street in broad daylight. It terrifies me. At noon, I stand there waiting to cross and cars just zip right by. And they can see me then. At night, it's not very well lit. I think there's four streetlights for those three crosswalks. My students go to, or my, my two children are students at Reed High School. My, my older son's in the band. There are times they have competitions, they get, they, they leave late. It's almost impossible to see. So I, I think it would be, it's a no-brainer to me that, that it gets lit better, that there are crosswalk beacons. Personally, I'd love to see speed bumps that are to slow the cars down. So I urge you guys to, to really seriously consider this. It, I, I think it's something that, that sorely needs addressed. Thank you.
Thank you sir. You know, we're investigating the accident to make sure we have all our.
Yeah, I'm sure you are, I, I, I.
Is it crossed and T's dotted or whatever you want to say, so. And you know, we'll, we'll look and see what's appropriate there and, you know, we understand. We, we know where you're coming from.
And, and I, and I would expect that, I, I would expect nothing less, so thank you very much.
Thank you sir.
Where do I, where do I get the card, by the way? Right there, thank you.
Thanks again sir, appreciate that. Okay, anyone else, public comment? Okay, we'll move on then. Approval of the agenda, anybody want to take anything out of order? If not, looking for a motion? Mr. Dare?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second, Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Dare, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve the agenda as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Okay, minutes 6.1, consideration of possible approval of the minutes of the regular Sparks City Council meeting of October 8, 2018, and the Sparks City Council Sewer Rate Study Workshop of October 8, 2018. Any omissions, deletions, corrections? Not looking for a motion, Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve the minutes of the regular Sparks City Council meeting of October 8, 2018, and the Sparks City Council Sewer Rate Study Workshop of October 8, 2018.
Second, Mr. Abbott?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Abbott to approve 6.1 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously, thank you. Announcements and presentations, city manager, announcements of vacancies on the Sparks Senior Citizens Advisory Committee and the Airport Noise Advisory Committee. Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The following committee appointments are available. The first is for the Sparks Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. The big committee requires one member and one alternate from wards 1 through 5, and two members and one alternate from the mayor. Members shall be residents of the city of Sparks, preferably over the age of 55, who have a desire to learn about interactions between the city's aging senior population and the city government, and a willingness to share their collective knowledge with others. Applications will be accepted until Friday, November 16, 2018. Also, an appointment to the Airport Noise Advisory Panel. One member who needs to be a resident representative. He'll be filling, that person will be filling a partial term, which will end on December 31, 2018. But, and, and also for following two-year term that would expire on the 31st of December of 2020. Applications for this board will be accepted until Friday, November 30, 2028. So for persons who are interested on this committee, should complete a committee, community service application available from the city of Sparks. You can also apply online at the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us. Click on Government on the webpage. And then under Boards and Commissions, click Volunteering for a Sparks Board or Commission. Then fill out the online application and submit before the appropriate deadline. Thank you.
Okay, next is a proclamation for Alpha One Awareness Month. Someone here to accept this?
Had a few.
Are you welcome?
I'm on air this time.
I've got plenty of oxygen this time, I promise.
Okay, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation and just, if you want to say a few words, just give your name for the record.
Heather is one of our longest-standing members and I'd like her to speak for me and I have a real hard time hearing her in this thing, so.
I'll read the proclamation and you're on there, okay?
Alright.
Whereas Alpha One anti-tripsin deficiency, how did I do? Anti-tripsin deficiency. Alpha One is one of the most common series hereditary disorders in the world and can result in life-threatening lung disease in adults and liver disease in both children and adults. And whereas Alpha One has been identified in nearly all populations and ethnic groups, it is estimated that about one in every 25,000, 2,500 Americans have Alpha One and up to 6% of the Caucasians in the US carry a single deficient gene and may pass the gene on to their children. And whereas Alpha One is widely under-diagnosed and misdiagnosed and fewer than 10% of those predicted to have Alpha One have been diagnosed and it often takes an average of five doctors and seven years from the time symptoms appear before proper diagnosis is made, which can be detected by a simple blood test. And whereas it is important to increase awareness and detection of this serious hereditary and misdiagnosed disorder. And whereas during the month of November, a nationwide awareness campaign will take place throughout the country to educate people, as well as the medical community, on Alpha One detection and treatment for those affected by this condition. Now therefore, I, Gino, our Martini Mayor of the city of Sparks, to hereby proclaim November 2018 as Alpha One Awareness Month. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. This is Norma Lee Singh. She is our support group leader here locally. And my name is Heather Allen. And I was, happened to be diagnosed through the Healthy Nevada Project. I don't know if any of you have heard of that. But 23andMe gave me my test results because every doctor I saw told me I was crazy. They told me that I should just go home and quit smoking. And I didn't smoke for over 11 years. And I ended up with genetic lung and liver disease. I'm one of the unfortunate ones that has both. It is very, it's not rare, it's just rarely diagnosed. It is a $5 blood test that helps diagnose people. And through the Healthy Nevada Project, we've actually tripled and almost quadrupled our support group. And through the Healthy Nevada Project, we've actually tripled and almost quadrupled our support group, um, because of the identification that is being done. Every person that has COPD or any breathing problems should be tested for Alpha One. Uh, most people just don't develop breathing problems. Most average people don't just develop breathing problems. Um, I brought on my, I brought with me my little carrier, I call her, um, my daughter. I'm homozygous, so I have two bad copies of the gene, so I got sicker than most. But my daughter, she's ten, and she's a carrier. And, you know, we're really worried about, one, air quality and all kinds of stuff because of her status. So she can still get sick even though she's a carrier. So if you hear somebody say, "Oh, I was tested, but I'm just a carrier," well, they can still get sick. So other than that, is there anything else that I should add?
We're doing a walk.
Oh, yes, the walk.
The walk. Um, every November around the country, all the groups try to raise money, obviously to find a cure. Someday, there will be a cure for it. They're doing a lot of stem cell research, they're doing a lot of things, but right now, they just need money for the research. So we're doing it down in Reno, because that's, we've got people from all the way Cold Springs down through Gardenville who belong to our group, so Reno Central Forest at the Old Town Library. And we're walking, or you can walk as you're sitting there. If you will join us, and I've got the website, you can just join us in your walk and get a T-shirt if you'd like, and help raise money so that we can actually someday, maybe Bree won't have to go through what she's going through, what my husband's going through, what Sally's going through, what Kyle's going through, that we can get this thing stopped and get more pulmonologists aware of what they're doing, get people tested and get it stopped right away, so.
Where's, where's the walk going to be?
And thank you.
At the Reno Town Mall, uh, by Burlington Coat Factory.
Right after the Town Mall, it's after the walk.
Yeah, the walk would be from the entrance of the Town Mall all the way to the library doors, because most of us with COPD can't walk very far.
The date again, please?
The date?
On November tenth.
November tenth.
The other thing is, do you have a website that you might want to give us that people can go to? You want, you just want to go ahead and read it for the record, too, please?
The website for the record is, uh, alphaone.org. It's through the Alpha One Foundation. And I'd also like to mention, she mentioned a cure. There is no cure, obviously, but there is treatment. And every single one of us has to get a blood infusion from a blood product in order to maintain our protein levels to protect our lungs. It takes nine hundred blood or plasma donations a year to medicate just me. And that takes nine hundred more to medicate Steve, and it takes nine hundred more to medicate Sally. So it's very important that we also, you know, promote blood donations and plasma donations because that is where our medication comes from.
So nine hundred a year?
Nine hundred a year just for me. And like I said, our support group quadrupled in the last year. Since the last time we spoke, our support group has quadrupled, and it takes nine hundred per Alpha One patient just to medicate us for one year.
Any comments, questions? Okay, thanks, ladies, for coming. We, we appreciate it, and, uh, hopefully, uh, people will sign up for your walk and make, get more awareness in the community of the Alpha One problem. Thanks again for coming. Appreciate it. Okay, next is, uh, seven point three, Proclamation, Community Planning Month. Anybody here to accept this? Oh, I should have known. I saw you up there. Welcome, Angela. I think we do this every year, don't we?
We do.
Okay, good. Looks familiar, so. All right, here we go. Whereas change in constant and effect, constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, countries, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places, community planning can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for now, how people work and live. And whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be man- meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand and support and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas the month of October is designed as National Community Planning Month about the United States of America and its territories. And whereas the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners endorses National Community Planning Month and has the opportunity to highlight the contributions sound planning and plan implementation make to the quality of our environment. And whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of the planning commissions and other citizens planners who have contributed their time and enterprise to the improvement of the city of Sparks. And whereas we recognize the, uh, many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners of the city of Sparks and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, to hereby proclaim the month of October two thousand and eighteen as Community Planning Month in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. Okay, Angela, just give us your name for the record, and go ahead.
Thank you for the record, Angela Fuess, here today on behalf of the American Planning Association. National Community Planning Month really gives us an opportunity to, to take a look at what's happened in the last year and some of the major changes, not just within the city, but within the community as a whole. When I look back at what's happened in the last year, we have the Southeast Connector, we have the North Truckee Drain, we have schools being built, we have some major infrastructure projects that are actually moving forward. And so it makes me very happy to see, as a community, it's not just the houses and the apartments and the commercial, it's really the infrastructure. And, and we wouldn't get there without leadership from the elected officials. So thank you for all that you do. I also just want to take a, a step back and look at city of Sparks, kind of as a, as a smaller level, and I, I work with a lot of jurisdictions, and by far, the city of Sparks has the best can-do attitude towards any other jurisdiction in northern Nevada. You know, when you go to Sparks and you bring them a difficult project, the answer is not, "No, thank you for coming in." The answer is, "Let's see how we can get to yes." And again, that stops, starts at the top, where it's the elected officials. It, it, it does start at the top, and it filters down through your management and through all the way down to, you know, your, your technical staff. So thank you for that open arms attitude. It's, it's a breath of fresh air.
It's a culture, dear.
It's an absolute culture, and that's, again, starts with you guys. Um, one final thing is, next year, we will be holding the State Planning Conference in the city of Sparks. Very excited to be able to show off all the wonderful things that you guys have done. It's been about eight years since we held the conference in Sparks, so I look forward to working with your community development staff, and again, showing off the entire state of Nevada Planning Department and, and planning commissioners, the great things that you guys are able to do. So thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Appreciate it. Comment? Yeah, it's, it's a culture, I believe it. You know, it, it, that's just what we believe, that's all.
Yeah.
And I, I, we can see it makes a difference. We know it makes a difference. We can just see by the things we improve and get done that, that, what difference it is, so. Thanks.
Thanks.
I'll give you a proclamation.
We'll come to your party.
Okay, we're at, uh, seven point four, Presentation, Nevada Opportunity Zones. Catherine.
Mr. Smith? Mayor, Mayor Proterm, and the rest of the council on the dais.
Go ahead.
Um, good afternoon. I am here today, I'm Kathy Cluett with the city manager's office. I'm before you to, uh, help you along with your discussion on federal opportunity zones. With me today is Derek Armstrong, who is a deputy director in the governor's office of economic development. Mr. Armstrong served five years in the United States Marine Corps. He graduated from UNLV Law School. He owned a law firm specializing in tax law. And last but not least, he's a former state assemblyman, and he was the chair of taxation when he was in the assembly. So with that, I'm going to leave the presentation, um, with Mr. Armstrong, but we're both available for questions if you happen at the end of the presentation.
Okay. Mr. Armstrong, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Proterm. Um, I really appreciate the, the opportunity to come speak to you guys, and, and this is meant to be, um, a discussion because of this program and its fluidity as it's developed. Uh, the federal treasury just came out with some, some additional regulations, some proposed rules last Friday, so this program is still in its infancy and, and is still growing. And before I start, I just wanted to introduce, I know that they were mentioned during public comment, uh, with me, we have, uh, our northern deputy director, Matthew Moore, and then also Patty Herzog from our office as well. Um, so if we can answer any questions further, we, we want to make sure that we're a resource to you guys. So as we talk about Nevada Opportunity Zones, I want to talk about first the, the federal program. So how Opportunity Zones came about, in, in two thousand and seventeen, in the Federal Task Cuts and Job Act, there was a small provision, section fourteen hundred Z, so it's pretty far in there, um, that, that created this program, Opportunity Zones. And it was really meant to spur investment in low-income areas. And how they were doing that was, it's a separate, it's a, it's a different type of idea. One, they wanted to try to unlock private investors to invest there. There's, there's other federal programs like New Markets and otherwise that provide, um, debt, really, for, for some of these projects, but this is really an equity function. So it's how do we get investors to, to, to make these investments in these, these low-income zones? So there was a group called the Economic Innovation Group. Uh, they're a federal group that really pushed for this legislation and became a bipartisan issue, and it, it got included in the Federal Jobs Act. So like I mentioned previously, was part of that Investment in Opportunity Act, and it's, it's really focusing on low-income census tracts across the state. So in Nevada, there was two hundred and forty-three low-income census tracts, and this program allows the governor to select up to twenty-five percent of those, uh, low-income census tracts in the state. So in our process for coming up with which census tracts would be selected, um, our office put together, um, a, a scoring model. One, we reached out to local governments, including the, the city of Sparks. I, I think we worked with, um, I think his name was Armando, uh, in coming up with some of the priorities. Um, so we reached out to, to every local jurisdiction across the state to find out where their priorities were, where they, they had known in, uh, projects and where this could most benefit. Additionally, after that, we added a couple of national studies, one by the, the Urban Institute that looked at the likelihood of investment in each of these census tracts, and one by the Governance Project that looked at the social need for, for each of these census tracts to show that what we were doing actually was going to make an impact, and it followed the intent of the federal legislation. So I had mentioned that there was two hundred and forty-three census tracts across the state with the ability of, of nominating, uh, twenty-five percent of those, so that, that meant sixty-one tracts. So how that ended up turning out, um, was, it was, it was two-thirds, one-third, uh, northern Nevada versus, uh, southern Nevada. So twenty-one of the tracts are in northern Nevada, and forty, uh, forty-two, or forty are in southern Nevada. So this is the, this is the map of the Opportunity Zones as it relates to the Reno-Sparks area, and then you can see at the bottom, so the Tahoe Regional Industrial Complex, Story County is one big census tract, so that was included as well. Uh, for Sparks, um, this is mostly an industrial area, I believe, and I, I think that, um, I've heard some conversation of possible doing a residential overlay, uh, on that. So if there's some questions, maybe I can help answer some of the types of projects that could qualify for, for this program as well. Um, but if you look, um, there's a lot of potential areas for build-outs for this type of programs. So then we talk about, um, from this, what are the types of incentives out there for investors to invest in these zones? And there's really three. Um, so there's one, there's a deferral of tax gains. So this program is based off of, if you're an investor and you have capital gains in another project that have been built up, and you want to reinvest those capital gains, how do you do that without, one, uh, triggering, uh, a tax occurrence to where you have to pay taxes on that now? Or, two, like, what do I will get the best ROI on, right? If you're an investor and you want to make, uh, money. So this program allows you to do something that's different on a federal basis. One, there's a, this, this federal program called the Ten Thirty-One Exchange. So if you're an investor and you want to make a like, like-kind exchange in one project to another project, you can, and there's that deferral mechanism. But what this allows you is to unlock to a whole different type of investment. So this, the types of projects that are allowed under this, there's, at, at the end, there's a slide that talks about the, the projects that aren't, but it's pretty unlimited, the types of projects. You can't be a casino, and you can't be a massage parlor, it's in business, but everything else is pretty much fair game. If an investor thinks that they can make an ROI on this, then there's a possibility for you to implement these programs. So for those investors, the, the first benefit is that temporary deferral of capital gain. So if you invest in an opportunity zone, your tax gain is deferred on your original capital gains is deferred until the end of two thousand and twenty-six. The second part of that is a partial reduction of your deferred gain. So if you made your, and there's a timeline, and we'll go through this a- again, but if you make that investment now and you hold that investment for seven years of your original basis for what you invested, there's a fifteen percent step-up in basis, which reduces your tax liability. And then the third is if there's any appreciation on your capital gains that you've reinvested, all of that appreciation is tax-free. And that's really the kicker for, for these folks. So if they hold their investment for more than ten years, any appreciation on that investment, it becomes tax-free.
So you can apply all three, or you pick one?
Not only could you apply all three, because all three, um, count. So if you're making your investment now, which is that, that first temporary deferral of capital gain, uh, there's two periods, it's a five and a seven-year period that, uh, align with two thousand and twenty-six, so they're encouraging investment early. All of the others, uh, apply to you all. And then in addition to that, so if you're using other federal programs, you can couple with this. So I'm not aware of any New Markets Tax Program, um, projects in Sparks, but you could couple that with this program as well. So, um, there, there's, it just helps, uh, build that capital stack for, for these, uh, projects. Okay, so this is, this is just a, a further explanation of, of some of those, um, those benefits. So say for, for example, you had a million dollars in built-up capital gains. You wanted to invest this into the Opportunity Zone. Uh, you do that now, and so you'll have at least seven years before two thousand and twenty-six for that, that tax liability become, um, realized. So if you hold it for five years, that million dollars, you would end up becoming, you would have a ten percent, uh, step-up in basis. So if you only held it for five years, decided you wanted to, to get out of Opportunity Zone, you would have a tax liability on that nine hundred thousand dollars that you invested, or that million dollars that you invested in the Opportunity Zone, you would get a ten percent step-up in basis, which is worth, uh, a hundred thousand dollars to you, and, and reduce tax liability. If you hold it for seven, that steps up to fifteen percent, or in that million-dollar example, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So at the end of two thousand and twenty-six, you would owe taxes on eight hundred and fifty thousand instead of that million dollars. Then this, this talks about the permanent exclusion of any appreciation. So if that million dollars that you invested into an Opportunity Zone at the end of, um, two thousand and twenty-eight, if you did it right now, um, was, then were three million dollars, you would, you would only owe taxes on eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, your original capital gains, because you had that fifteen percent step-up in basis, and then that two million dollars in appreciation is tax-free. So it's a, it's a huge benefit, and it's, it's, um, I heard the, the secretary of the treasury saying that he's expecting about a hundred billion dollars in investment to come out of this program. And I know that the calls that we get in our office from around the state, including, um, the Sparks area, um, there's going to be at least ten billion dollars worth of investment in, in the state based off of this program.
You said a hundred billion?
A hundred billion across the country.
Yeah. Amazing.
So this is just a, another depiction of that, that timeline for what, um, what the benefits occur across the timeline. Um, I know you've guys had this. Is, first, I'll, I'll step off. Is, is there any questions regarding this program, or? I know some people have heard some certain things, and if I could answer any of that or clarify that, I, I've been going across the state talking to, to different jurisdictions.
Mr. Dare?
Yes.
When we're at National League of Cities, we heard this initially talked about, uh, last year. Are we automatically enrolled in this because we're in this state? Is there anything we need to be doing? Is there anything that, uh? I mean, how do we get a billion dollars?
So, um, so I guess I'll talk about what it means to be an opportunity fund, and then what you have to do to invest in an opportunity zone. And some of these are still being promulgated by, uh, the rules being promulgated by the treasury. So the, the first step in this process is you have to be in an opportunity zone in order to qualify. So what's depicted in blue on the map is already, uh, been designated by the, the treasury and the IRS as an opportunity zone. So that's the first step. The, this, and those designations last for ten years. So those designate, those designations were made in June. So until June of two thousand and twenty-eight, uh, these will be opportunity zones. Um, it's possible that we may be able... It's possible that we may be able to add some later, or clarify, or make adjustments, but that would have to be done by a bill in Congress. So the likelihood of that happening, I don't know, we'll see after the election. The second step is that you would need to invest your capital gains into an Opportunity Fund. So all that's required to be an Opportunity Fund is you would have to set up an entity, or you could find a fund. But all a fund is just a corporation, an LLC, as long as it's not a single member or a partnership, and this could be real estate investment trusts as well. As long as they're formed with the purpose of investing in an Opportunity Zone, that's all that's required. So the IRS is coming out with a self-certification form that will be attached to a taxpayer's form, notifying them that it's an Opportunity Fund. So they've actually made this a pretty easy process for starting a fund. But for you guys, for policymakers, and for us as offices of state, it makes it a little bit more difficult because it's not a federally funded program, it's just a tax incentive, that there's not really any tracking of these funds done on the federal level, so you can't go to a federal website and see a list of the funds. Most of these funds will make themselves available, at least the social impact types of funds, by websites, and you'll have to Google them, and I'm sure there'll be an organization created to track that. But you could be an individual going with another individual to create an Opportunity Fund, and the city council or the state may not know about that fund because they're just using it for their own personal purpose. So I think it's really, it's really key to find out what other types of activities or promotions that local governments and states can provide to really help find these funds and help projects for these funds as well. I'm not sure if that answers your question. Okay.
Ms. Barbie?
So on setting up the funds, are these done directly through the Treasury and the IRS? And I guess I've got a major question at EDON last week, the board meeting, discussions about the Opportunity Zones, and several members who have investors that are ready to go today, and they express some frustration because the IRS and Treasury are really not, haven't finished setting up what the rules and regs, and that's delaying. I mean, I think there's money here today, what does your timeline look like? And then where do people, is it through the IRS and Treasury that this is set up?
Yeah. And I would say that there's a lot of frustration out there, right? Government doesn't always work at the speed of business. So the way that the funds are set up, it's done just like starting another company. So you don't have to, I guess you have to make an election with IRS if you're a corporation, but for the most part, you could just file your normal business license, set up a corporation, and then that's all you need. And then the fund is just a separate schedule that's attached to your tax return. So it's pretty simple. As far as the timeline, people are starting to set up funds already, and people are making investments already. So the IRS has a Frequently Asked Questions page that said that they were going to put out the self-certification form this summer. Well, summer has passed, and they've recently come out and said that'll come out in the spring. So they're still working on some of those promulgations. Some rules came out on Friday, and this could answer some of the questions as it relates to buying property. So one of the questions that they answered was, if I purchase a piece of land with a building on it, how do I then ensure that I can receive the tax incentives? What are the requirements for substantially improving that building? Do I have to take into account the cost of the land when I'm doing that as a percentage? And they said that you only have to take account for the building, not the land, because the land was there, and it's always going to be in an Opportunity Zone as long as was. So you don't have to take that into consideration for this substantially improved. But they didn't answer the question on, well, if I just buy a vacant piece of land, what will then amount to substantially improving if I put a building on it? So those types of questions are still out there, and they're supposed to be answered in the spring.
So do we have to weigh, I guess the next follow-up would be, these businesses who said they have money today to invest, and they're waiting on the Treasury and the IRS for a lot of the rules and restrictions. Can they go ahead and set that up? They shouldn't have to wait until spring to do that, should they? And if so, is there anything we can do, or any of us as community leaders can do to try to speed up that process?
So the answer to that is, I think there's uncertainty there, and I would tell people to go see their tax attorney, or their accountant, because I know that people are making up investments, and the IRS FAQs allude to some treatment of assets, and when you can make investments, and people are already making investments. But there's that uncertainty there without having the regulations to follow?
Exactly.
That you're, I wouldn't want to be on the hook if I were you guys at this point, giving out advice. So that's why I kind of push them along to see their tax attorneys. But I know the funds are being set up, and I know they're making investments already.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, good.
Okay. And we talked about what an Opportunity Fund is and how that's set up, so I'll skip that. So there's been all types of talk about what type of projects could be used for this. And, you know, you could purchase stock in a company, and that would count as long as they're an Opportunity Zone business. You could buy real estate and develop it. You could do transportation-related development as well. You could probably do affordable housing based off of a couple of models that are out there. It's really just limited to whether or not an investor and a developer think that they're going to, they're going to make an ROI on it. Because at the end of the day, this is incentive to somebody with capital gains that are looking to reinvest it. So as long as you can get creative with what you can generate a return on, is really the limiting factor for the types of the projects. However, it's still governed by the same section that governs the New Markets tax credits, so if you're looking for precedent for what can't be a business, that's where you would want to go look to see what you can't do.
Well, there goes my racetrack. Go ahead, don't mind my back, okay?
Oh, no worries, Mr. Mayor. So just for the city council's knowledge, so the Treasury is coming out to Las Vegas, we worked with them to set up a one-day conference to discuss this, in which we'll have investors, we'll also have projects out there as well, as well as some of the policymakers to provide updates for that. So the date for that is November 27, and that's going to be held at the City of Las Vegas Chambers, and it's going to be an all-day event. We are putting, we'll have a website up on DiversifyNevada.com, the GOED's website, to provide more information, but if anybody's wanting, I could send invites out now.
Questions, comments? Go ahead, chat.
Was this an amendment to the tax code? The US tax code that created these O-Zones or these O-Funds, how did that come about? What type of legislation was involved?
Yeah, so it was created as part of the Opportunity Investment Act, so it is an amendment to the tax code. I don't know this section off the top of my head.
That's okay, and I wouldn't remember it anyway, my age. But my question is, you're asking for a 22-year commitment. What happens if another administration comes in and repeals this? What assurances do businesses have, or investors have, that that might not go away?
So I'm not sure about the 22-year commitment, can, maybe I wasn't clear in something I stated earlier.
I mean, I've counted up, what, five years?
So it's one continuous, so within 10 years, that's all one time period.
So in the 10 years, you have the tax code, this provision of the tax code repealed?
Well, I think, based off of what, if you've already made the investment, I don't see them taking away that benefit, even if it's repealed at a future date, because there's a reliance argument and other arguments that go there.
Certainly, yeah. I have a vested interest, a vested right in this particular tax program, this tax-deferred program, that I voluntarily entered into with your assurances and your representations, and now all of a sudden it's been repealed. So now I've got to go to court with those types of arguments.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess in my mind, if you get a federal tax program started, what's the likelihood of that going away?
Well, we're in the process now of creating one regulation, but you've got to get rid of two. So I just don't know. It just, to me, the uncertainty of subsequent regulations, and where I came up with 22 years was your graph here, held for five years, held for seven years, held for 10 years.
Yeah, so I think that's probably better if that would have just been one blue line.
Okay.
Because it's all from 2018 to 2028.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, so that's probably, we could do a better job in presenting that.
No, no.
But I will say that, as a state, some of the stuff that we're looking at doing, and what we're currently doing, so our Housing Department is now looking at applications for affordable housing, and if they're looking to invest in an Opportunity Zone, those applications are getting priority. And additionally, with business and industry, when they're looking at private activity bonds, it's a similar process to where they're being scored higher. So if the city did want to do something to incentivize these projects to going there, I think it's probably more in line with just how you do applications, or permitting, or removing obstacles, and making it a priority.
Anyone else? Okay, thanks. Is that it, Kathy? Okay. Thanks, everyone, I just catch a little presentation, but thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, next, we have 7.5, Presentation, Greyhound, Integration into Centennial Plaza. Jody, you back again? Good to see you. I see you brought some suits with you, that's a good, that's a good sign.
I need spring pants.
That's a good sign, we have some.
You go ahead, back to the back.
Oh, yeah. They want to hear from you, let me.
We're really glad you're here.
Can you hear me okay? Hi, I'm Bill Blankenship, I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Greyhound Lines, and I want to thank you for giving us an opportunity today to discuss and tell about our plans for Centennial Plaza here in Sparks. First, I'd like to apologize, I think the last time we tried to present to the city council, we tried to do it by phone, and I understand it didn't go well. And so that's why I'm here today, to do this in person, and address any questions you may have about the relocation of our facility here. Greyhound's been in business for 104 years. Started in 1914, in Hibbing, Minnesota, moving miners, and things have changed pretty dramatically. I can tell you, last night, on the airplane that I flew over, that was a pretty cramped coach seat, and on our buses now, we actually have more legroom than what you'd see on a typical airline passenger. Leather seats, free Wi-Fi, they charge you on the airline, electro outlets, and then we just now have launched a new entertainment system, bring your own device, like your iPad or phone, and you can watch movies. We're 6,000 employees strong, we handle and carry about 16 million passengers a year in North America. The, you know, we are really excited about intermodal facilities throughout North America. And what we mean by intermodal facilities is bringing connections with different modes of transportation to one facility. And I guess you probably have heard about millennials and Gen X, and how important it is to them to have that connectivity, and first mile, last mile. We're seeing people get their driver's license and car licenses much later in life, and the customers are telling us that they need that connectivity. We're now located in 168 intermodal facilities throughout North America, in varying degrees of sizes. We've moved into brand-new standalones this year in Birmingham, Jacksonville, Florida, Transbay in San Francisco just opened recently, and we've moved into existing facilities like we have here in Sparks, and Fayetteville, Wichita, Kansas, Monroe, Louisiana, is one that just happened recently. And so we're excited about the opportunity to bring those customers together and connect that connection. We also offer very affordable transportation. I looked up the fares today, just going from here to Sacramento, starts at $10 and goes up to 15, and the San Francisco's 13 and 19. So we think we offer affordable option for customers to get from point A to point B. From a demographic standpoint, this market's a little unique in that we have a much higher proportion of retirees that use our service, around 25%. College students in about the 7% range, usually that's a little bit higher in other markets, and so forth. So customers that use demographics, that use our service here in Reno, are very close to what the demographics you would see on your transit service. So I have a whole presentation here, and I'm more than willing to go through each page, or different pages like, or I'm willing to take questions, so I'll let you guys guide me on how you'd like to do that.
If you just want to hit the highlights of your presentation and open it up for questions, I think would be good, sir.
Okay, great. So you can see, on this page, it's just the demographics, and the bubble to the right, the green and blue, represents customers over 55 years of age, and so you can see that's 37%. 95% of our customers are employed, and you can see the breakdown by students and so Centennial Plaza, I got to tell you, is a beautiful facility. When we started looking a year and a half ago when we were selling our location, it was, I came after the conversations already started, but it was my first choice. I think it's got a natural fit, it has some space that will work, and it's a beautiful facility, you're be commended. The next portions of the drawings are just the schematics, I won't go through every one of these, but there's ample space there. And we're going to bring between 12 and 14 schedules in daily, so that that means that's between six and seven buses. So you have an inbound schedule, an outbound schedule. It will vary a little bit by day of week, Friday, Sunday, Saturday, tend to be our heavier schedules, and then at Christmas time and Thanksgiving, and those type of things, we'll add some additional schedules. With that, I think I'll open up the questions, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer for you.
Okay, questions of the Greyhound folks? Mr. Smith?
Well, thanks for coming down for the presentation today. Who's on the phone?
I was here the last time, yes. Well, I was here by phone last night.
And I ask you a question, if you're going to have a attendant at the Plaza during operating hours?
Yes, sir, we will.
You will, during, all your operating?
All our operating hours.
Okay, that's very important, that we have someone.
Do you have someone to meet each bus, then? Is that?
Yeah, and tickets, and we can serve ourselves more of a full service, like you have the airlines, where we can help passengers with baggage, passengers that maybe need some help, and so forth, and so every schedule will be met. There'll be a ticket counter that will be also manned, and that's just our business model, unlike some of our competitors out there, we're just on a curbside basis.
Okay, Mr. Dare?
I have a few questions and a few concerns. We work very diligently to make sure that our downtown, we've worked very hard on it, put a lot of money into it, and making sure we don't have people, we don't want people sleeping down there, that's not what that's for. I'm envisioning something here, and I just, help me understand how that's not going to happen, that you don't show, I mean, are you bringing buses in the middle of the night, where these people, I mean, is a certain time schedule for these things? How do we make sure you, with what possible need you're bringing in the area, how are you going to help with that, or is that something our police just have to absorb? I think it's strange, I have to just say, because it just still baffles my mind, that we sold something, that you had a place, and now you come where we're not sure this is a great fit. So it's nothing personal to you, I don't even know you, but I can tell you, the idea of it seems very interesting to me, and it sounds like it's something we're not necessarily, not necessarily asking our opinion on, but I, and I don't like that either, but I would say that if this is the case, I don't think it's fair to bring something in that all of a sudden now our funds, and what we have to do, has to fix something that maybe you bring in the area.
Well, you know, we hear that concerns, and quite frankly, it's stereotyping of the bus customers, right? It's, I spend, as my role, I don't believe in being behind a desk, I'm out in the field, I work the holidays next to our folks, I talk to our passengers, they're hard-working Americans and folks from across this great nation, that just want to, you know, go and see family and friends and so forth. We'll work closely with security at the location, as we always do. There are, at times, people that are not passengers that will come in, we'll work closely with the security and RTC to make sure that doesn't happen. I can tell you, when we move in the intermodal facilities away from 24-hour brick-and-mortar, we see those security concerns almost disappear. We're operating at a time, in all our schedules, at least there's one transit bus operating as well, so we won't be operating in a closed environment where you're not, where we're the only ones operating at that time.
And further to add to that, the lease that we're contemplating has security as a service that will be provided by RTC. It's a gross lease, so that's an element that is covered in the lease, and there is a structure such as, if additional security is required, that that can, there's a structure within the lease to impose that as well.
And so with that in conversation, can we put something, can we ask, that you come back, and let's talk in a couple of months, and see how it's going, let's talk, and let's make sure that you guys are seeing what we're seeing, because we have different responsibilities here. I mean, you guys are coming in to bring a business, I'm not saying you're not a good businessman, I'm not saying you don't care about our city, I'm not saying you that.
Sure.
But you don't have my job, and I know my job, and so I- And so I very much care that we're not doing that. And if so, I would, at that point, hope that you'll be willing to make some adjustments if necessary. And the other question is parking. There's not parking down there. You say there's ample room. I question that, actually. I don't know how that's going to work. Have you, has that been figured out?
Yeah, to answer your first question, we'd love to come back and partner with you from a community engagement standpoint. The gentleman that will be running this location and manage this location has 13 years of intercity bus experience. If you have community boards in this area, we'll be glad to partner and be part of that. We do that in many cities. And I would be happy to come back as well and tell you, from my standpoint, how it's going. The second thing from parking, the vast majority of our locations across the country do not have parking, especially in major metropolitan locations. What you have is people using your transit system to get to the station. And then you have pickups and drop-offs, similarly what you would have at other transportation modes.
Thank you. Ms. Bybee?
I'm going to follow up also. The parking is a huge concern for me because when you have people being dropped off and picked up, where do the, right now, you can't go drive over to Centennial Plaza and find anywhere to go in your car. I mean, I drove by there the other day and realized that everything is for buses. So if I've got grandma, then I'm dropping off on a bus, where do I go? So the concern about pickup and drop-off and how that will be addressed? Is there anywhere that will be designated for that that's different than the current setup of Centennial Plaza? And if so, I don't know that that's Greyhound. Is that RTC that would have to be doing that?
We'll work with RTC on the specific locations. And for our employees, we're going to lease, you know, parking off-site, you know, so that we're not taking up spaces at the RTC. Again, you know, you think about major facilities that we have across the country. We make, we'll make it work. We don't provide long-term parking in very few of our facilities across the country. You're seeing also with rideshare and so forth, a lot more just picks and drops very quickly. And I think you'll see the same type of thing in this market. As well as the number of schedules we're bringing in is not a, you know, it's really six or seven outbound schedules a day or six or seven inbound schedules. It's not going to bring a large volume of traffic.
So on the, piggybacking on the schedule, is it a 24-hour schedule? And will there be 24-hour security? So you're saying six buses, so 12, six in, six out?
Roughly, on average.
12 trips, 12 to 14 trips. What time, you know, what time schedule are we looking at? And are there, will there be security there if there's buses coming and going at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning?
Yes, I believe there will be security there. We don't have anything at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning. The first schedule's around 5:40, 5:45, somewhere in that neighborhood. And the last schedule is at 11:50, but that only runs on Friday, Sunday, I believe. The rest of it closes at 10 o'clock. If it becomes an issue, we need to tweak our schedules. We can certainly do that as well.
And are you working with RTC on the, your schedule coordinating with RTC buses? I'm also concerned because we're trying to improve our Fourth Street corridor and the amount of buses and intermodal and the transportation we have locally that people are taking RTC buses. And we've just spent a lot of money to improve the Fourth Street corridor for that purpose. So is, are the slots and the time that your buses are there, how will they interact with people that want to connect on other buses? And part of your presentation before talked about the train station, which was puzzling to me that we're going to put some, bring somebody all the way out to Sparks to get on another bus to go to downtown Reno when we have the railroad station, the railway Amtrak station, seemed like a better fit of where a bus Greyhound would be because it's right there at the train station instead of putting them on another bus. It just, it didn't make sense. It just didn't seem logistically like a smart move.
Yeah, we're actually sharing passengers on the Long Island Quarter with Amtrak between Reno and Salt Lake City. That's a small portion of the number of schedules we actually operate. As far as, if you look up on the screen right here, this is a clock sheet. And you can see at the very top is Greyhound schedules. And then you can see the utilization by the RTC buses. So anywhere as a gap is empty spots. And so we do this pretty exclusively in all the different arrangements we have at intermodal facilities, make sure there's space. It looks like there's ample expansion as well, opportunities if you want to expand bus schedules and so forth.
So is there a reason that you did not pursue the Amtrak facility to do the Greyhound there? That seemed like a very logical, if you're really, you know, transporting people and coordinating with Amtrak, why not be right where Amtrak is so that people are coming or going on the train or right there to get on your buses and vice versa?
As I mentioned, my first choice was Sparks. We did have some dialogue with the city of Reno on the Amtrak location. It's an old historic building, so it requires historical confidence. And quite frankly, the amount of money potentially to bring it up to speed with roofing and so forth could have been a concern. So, but we did have those conversations as well with the city of Reno.
Okay. I appreciate you answering the questions. It's hard for me. I feel like Councilman Dare does. I feel like this is something, you're coming in, and RTC and Greyhound comes in and tells us that we have to do it. And it's our city, and it's our downtown. And I'm Chair of the Redevelopment Agency, and we've got Victorian Square full under construction with lots going on. And I kind of feel that we have no choice in the matter, and I'm not real happy about that. And maybe I don't have a choice, but I would like to voice my concerns because I feel like it's just being kind of put in our new brown, you know, Victorian Square district. And we don't have a choice in the matter, so I have concerns.
I know you're working with RTC to make sure they have commuter buses available when your buses come in. And that way, they can get the bus over to the Fourth Street Station or to the Amtrak Station, wherever you're going. So I just want to make sure that you follow up and keep up with that. It's just kind of tailing off what Councilman Bybee says. And I understand the federal regulations that are bringing you to Sparks. And at one time, if we'd done this early, you'd be in the Fourth Street Station until we brought in 17 new electric buses, took up a lot of the scheduling. So I want this to be a good partnership, and I think it will be. I think it is a good idea to give us a quarterly update because, you know, the detractors out there will definitely have issues, and we want to address them as soon as possible.
And we look forward to partner with you as well and any way we can to make this as seamless as possible and provide a great service to the citizens of Sparks.
Thank you.
Mr. Abbott?
Is it a start date or tentative?
Yeah, on or before December 3rd.
Of this year, right?
That's correct.
And then back on the schedule, I'm a little confused, to be honest.
It's hard to read.
So the in-use orange squares, are those RTC buses in use?
Yes, that's correct. Each row is a bay.
Okay.
That goes from A through O horizontally. And the orange-looking little box would be an RTC schedule, bus schedule. And the arrows going vertically are the Greyhound buses.
Okay. And then on that, and then going back to that December 3rd date, you know, we were having off-site parking. I think you're close. You'll figure it out. It kind of seems a little close to be figuring it out. We're like a month out, right? Or give or take? So, I don't know. That one worries me, definitely.
We'll make sure we work with RTC and get the appropriate loading and unloading zone identified for the passengers. Again, this is something we do nationwide, so it's lower on my priority list from a standpoint of complexity. Right now, it's getting the fixtures in and so forth and all the wiring so we can make sure we provide that level of service our customers expect.
Any other questions? Okay, I have one question. Why did you sell the terminal in Reno?
Why did we or why didn't we?
Why?
Why? Because our customers are wanting intermodal connectivity. We don't need to be in the real estate where we're standalone bus station any longer. And that's why we're in 160 intermodal facilities. Also, you know, there's redevelopment opportunities for that piece of property. It takes up an entire city block, and it could be a win-win for everybody associated with it.
Any other questions?
Just for the comment there, that property is, or that building is no longer of the highest and best use. It's a very attractive property by the river. And
Money on the sale, right?
Well, that's, that's, yes, that's correct. But it looks like that property will have a different use very soon.
I get it. The point I'm getting is you got out of one terminal to use something that you have to drive right by two other terminals to drop people off, to get them on another bus to bring them back the other way.
Yep.
Anyway, no further, we're not scheduled to, we're not, agenda is doing any kind of action on this. So, Jody, thank you again for bringing this, these two gentlemen, this, Mr. Blankenship. You're a very silver-tongued devil. I appreciate you coming. You got by very smoothly with everything. Nobody threw any arrows at you. So you did a great job. I appreciate the presentation. And you, sir, I appreciate you being here in person. Makes a lot of difference. We can see your face, know who we're talking to. I, myself, feel much more comfortable now with what's going on. I'm not saying I agree with it or like it, but it's something we can deal with, I think. So thanks, Jody, and thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, consent items. Anybody want to pull a consent item? Okay, looking for a motion? Mr. Abbott?
I move to approve consent items 8.1 through 8.6.
Second, Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Abbott, second, Mr. Smith to approve agenda items 8.1 through 8.6. The consent items, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Okay, let's move on to 9.1. Discussion of Possible Approval of a Professional Services Contract with Cardinal Infrastructure LLC, Anya Graves. We're lobbying in Washington, DC. Kathy Clowat.
Good afternoon, again, Mr. Mayor and Council. Kathy Clowat with the City Manager's Office. Today, we're having, before the actual contract discussion, we're doing a slight federal update. A lot of things have been happening. And representing Cardinal Infrastructure is Bennett Resnick. He's one of the directors at Cardinal. Behind him is also Anya Graves, who is a principal at Cardinal Infrastructure. And so Bennett is going to give you a short update, and then we'll go on to other business.
Before my colleague Bennett starts, I just wanted to say that it has been my absolute pleasure to work with Mayor Martini in a bipartisan way. I understand. Yeah. Thank you. On numerous federal issues for the past 15 years, the mayor's service on behalf of the city of Sparks in DC has resulted in substantial federal investment in your community, including the North Truckee Drain, the Larry D. Johnson Community Center, the Sparks Marina, and funding for the Sparks Fire and PD. So I just wanted to express my thanks to the mayor.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the City Council. My name is Bennett Resnick, and I have the pleasure alongside Anya Graves of working on your behalf in Washington, DC. Speaking before you today, our government operates under a continuing resolution through December 7th for the following spending bills: Homeland Security, Commerce, Justice, Science, and State; Transportation, Housing and Urban Development; Financial Services, Agriculture, and Interior Environment. Over the last several months, the House and Senate have worked to pass, and the President has signed two mini-bus spending packages. The first package included funding for Energy, Water Development, Military Construction, and Veterans Affairs, and the Legislative Branch. The second package for the Department of Defense and the Departments of Labor, Health and Human Services, and Education. When the House and Senate come back from recess, they will have 12 legislative days to pass the remaining appropriations before December 7th. Prior to adjourning for recess, there was this great momentum. Congress passed nine spending bills, the first time that's happened since 2009, and the first before September since 1999. Hopefully, this energy continues, and Congress is able to pass the remaining bills before the end of the continuing resolution. Should this not occur, it is likely that Congress will pass a continuing resolution lasting several months to allow for allocations to be made for discretionary and formula programs and to avoid a partial government shutdown. Speaking of Congress returning after the elections, the analytics cite 538 in various models give Democrats about a 70% to 80% chance of winning a House majority come November, projecting an average gain of at least 32 seats, well above the 23 Republican-held seats needed to win control of the chamber. 538 still gives Republicans about a 30% chance to keep control of the House, and much can change between now and November 6th. On the Senate side, Republicans are likely to maintain the majority with the most optimistic outlook for Democrats being a 51- to 49-seat minority. Anything between Republicans holding 47 seats and 56 seats is within the margin of error. Should Democrats win majority in the House come November, there will be a significant shift in committee priorities. Democrats are likely to launch oversight and investigations on a number of key issues, including but not limited to the President's personal tax returns, Russian election interference, the nomination process of Supreme Court Justice Brett Kavanaugh, and ethics questions surrounding cabinet secretaries. Furthermore, Democrats are likely to consider legislation regarding gun control, regulation of the Internet, immigration and border security, tax policy, drug prices, and infrastructure. Infrastructure is actually one priority Congress and the administration agree, though there is a bit of disagreement on how to properly fund those investments. A comprehensive infrastructure funding package is somewhat unlikely, although several smaller funding bills have been discussed as a possibility in the next Congress. The President has previously discussed his interest in passing an infrastructure package, which is in addition to what his administration has already done and continues to do on the regulatory front. Additionally, we've been working with a nonpartisan group of intergovernmental organizations, including the U.S. Conference of Mayors, National League of Cities, and the National Association of Counties with respect to the Federal Communications Commission's order on accelerating wireless broadband deployment by removing barriers to infrastructure investment. This is one of three proposed FCC rulings that would inhibit local governments' authority in the wireless broadband development space. The FCC is moving forward with one of those rules, which would curtail local governments' authority in 5G expansion. The rule institutes strict approval times for local governments to approve contracts and caps the fees jurisdictions can provide, among other requirements. Essentially, the order preempts local government authority to manage and receive fair compensation for installation of small cells and other related facilities in the right of way and on city-owned infrastructure. In a separate action, the FCC made a final order prohibiting cities and other local governments and states from imposing moratoria that might delay companies from accessing local rights of way and local property to deploy wireless and wireline facilities. The FCC order establishes two new shock clocks for small wireless facilities: 60 days for co-location on pre-existing structures and 90 days for new buildings. Among other issues, the proposed shock clocks do not leave sufficient time for local governments to complete necessary reviews to protect public safety or meet basic due-process standards and place an unreasonable burden on local government resources. While the Coalition has urged the FCC to delay the effective date of the order pending any reconsideration or court review, in the event the FCC opts not to do so, we, along with the Coalition, have asked the FCC to delay the effective date after publication of the Federal Register to give local governments a sufficient transition period to amend their codes consistent with the order and new rules. We will work, we will continue to work alongside the Coalition and provide necessary updates on these efforts. As Mr. Armstrong discussed, the Treasury Department and IRS propose rules clarifying what kinds of taxable gains can be deferred from investments in the Opportunity Zone Program created by last year's federal tax reform bill. These rules and regulations will need to be clarified through the Notice and Comment Period, which is open for the next 60 days. And we will also continue to monitor the Opportunity Zone Program and provide counsel as needed.
So that's one thing that, one question that came up. So one option is to write in and provide comment to the various proposals. Something to consider, either as an individual or as a city.
In addition, Congress passed America's Water Infrastructure Act, which addresses Army Corps of Engineers' operations and projects, water and wastewater infrastructure. It includes at least $9 billion in authorized money for such projects and initiatives, most notably with the support from Senators Heller and Cortez Masto, Congressman Hamiday, and Congresswoman Titus. The bill included a provision to authorize the Truckee Meadows Flood Control Project at $181 million in federal funds. The Water Resources Reform and Development Act of 2014 included a provision that requires the Secretary to carry out a locally-preferred plan if it provides a higher level of flood protection and the cost is not greater than the plan instituted by the Army Corps of Engineers. The provision in the recently passed bill not only authorized $181 million in funding, but increases the time for review by the Army Corps before the seven-year deauthorization window closes, providing enough time to review and approve the project. The bill also authorizes $25 million for each of fiscal year 2020 and 2021 for the Drinking Water Infrastructure Risk and Resilience Program for the purpose of increasing the resilience of community water systems. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just, I'm sorry. I was just trying to get your attention.
I didn't see your name up there.
Oh, you're right. I didn't put it up there.
Yeah, okay.
I just want to make sure I understand right with
I just want to make sure I understand right with the, so we understand the Army Corps of Engineers. We understand that. Did you just say that they're extending the time? Or did I not hear that right?
Correct. They extended the time to review the project by two years.
By two years. Okay.
From seven to, seven to 10, I believe.
Correct.
Seven to 10 years. And then you're also including in this, and maybe you're not gotten to it, is the, there's a portion that can also go for possible need for sewage or reclaimed water, or whatever we have with them?
Correct.
That's something we have not applied for yet, though, right? That's brand new.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
The bill also funds the Innovative Water Technology Grant Program, which is also new, and that's intended to accelerate the development and deployment of innovative water technologies that address drinking water supply, quality, treatment, or security challenges of public water systems. Lastly, we've also been engaged with the Congressional Delegation on Support for the City's Grant Submissions. For example, we assisted the city in securing $50,000 from the National Endowment for the Arts for our town grant program. These funds will be used for an arts overlay project that will be situated in the downtown Victoria Square area as part of the Together We See Sparks Engagement Project. As you can see, there's a great deal of activity in Washington. We look forward to continuing to provide updates for your consideration. We're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Well, thanks for your great update. We look forward to it every time you come out.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to nine. Well, that was, that was your presentation. And Mr. Driscoll, nine point one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, Steve Driscoll, City Manager, for the record. Why we asked to do that update was to give you a good demonstration of the services that you've been paying for, for the last 16 to 18 years from the federal basis, and the voice that you continue to have back with both the administration and the Congress, as it relates to City of Sparks individually inside the bigger federal lobby picture and the, and the federal platform that you have on an annual basis. With that, we have an ongoing contractual relationship with Cardinal Infrastructure, and it's time to again consider a new contract for them. What's proposed in the staff report is a two-year contract, providing the services and our statement of work, which are very similar to what we've done in the past, which is working with the different offices, as well as the federal government departments, and getting the reports and helps with grants. And so what's in front of you is a two-year contract with a defined dollar value. And also, because it's a service industry, similar to what we do as a business, I was suggesting, and they, and Cardinal provided a proposal that would allow them to increase the fees that they charge us, because what they predominantly do is people, and to use the same salary inflators that we use for all of our employees inside the city. So, using the same Bureau of Labor Statistics value that gets us in between a range of, you know, having a low end and a top end. And so with that, the other part of the contract is using two-year cycles, both like with the state and the federal government. You're kind of going between elections. It's very important to understand from election cycle to election cycle. And Cardinal Infrastructure has done a tremendous job of being able to quantify and to show us how things flow and work through. So, working in two-year cycles seems to make a lot more sense than every year working to work on a new contract. And so this contract would provide, if you were to approve it, an initial period of two years, and then two subsequent two-year renewal periods that require mutual agreement. So, if for any reason either side decides that they would like to change that relationship, it's able to, we're able to look at that every two years with the escalator that's in place over the entire length of the potential contract. With that, I'm prepared to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions or comments, Ms. Bybee?
Okay, there we go. Sorry. So, I do have a question on the recommended motion in front of us. The $65,000 is annually not for the two-year period, correct?
It's for a two-year contract with a $65,000 per year.
Per year.
In the first term, yes.
Okay, so we need to specify that in the motion, then. $65,000 per year for the two-year contract.
We'll take two. Correct. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? You know, for me, I've worked with Anya and her group for 12 years now, and I always appreciate your insight, professionalism, and your accessibility. You've always been available to us whenever we needed you. So, I'm going to be supporting the contract and look forward to many more years with you, Anya. Okay, Ms. Bybee?
I'm ready for a motion.
Okay.
Okay, I'm pleased to make a motion to approve the contract terms with Cardinal Infrastructure LLC in the amount of $65,000 annually for the term of December 1st, 2018, through November 30th, 2020, with the option to renew these services for an additional four years under mutual consent of both parties.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second, Mr. Abbott?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. And it passes unanimously. Thanks. Thank you, Anya. Thanks, Bennett. Thank you very much. Okay. We are on nine point two. Consideration, discussion, possible approval of a contract AC 5524 for the El Rancho Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project to Gerhart &amp; Berry Construction. Kevin, how are you?
Good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of council. For the record, Kevin Porter, Senior Civil Engineer. The item before you is for the construction contract with Gerhart &amp; Berry Construction for the El Rancho Sewer Improvement Project. This project was identified in our 2016 sewer model update as a high-priority capital improvement project. It will upsize existing sewer from eight-inch to 15-inch along the El Rancho Corridor, and it will add new sewer through the Audi intersection at El Rancho. What this will provide is much-needed capacity improvements to the El Rancho Drive Corridor, as well as the Audi Boulevard and Green Beret redevelopment district. The, we received six bids through the formal bid process here at the city on September 19th. Bids ranged from the low bid with Gerhart &amp; Berry Construction of $1.7 million to the high bid of $2.5 million. Staff recommends that council approve the contract, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions or comments for Kevin? Mr. Dare?
I just want to confirm that that's not just, we're splitting this with Reno, their portion, or is this our portion?
This is our portion.
This is our portion.
Yeah, we own the sewer that comes down El Rancho currently, and this is, this has been as, as part of that sewer model. We've seen this as a, as a need to upsize, to allow for the added capacity of some of the redevelopment that we're seeing along the Green Beret, El Rancho area there, and then to also alleviate pressure that the current system puts on the Green Beret system that, that we receive through the City of Sparks, and to reroute that down to a G Street interceptor.
With all that we're doing there, and I just ask, I mean, I'm sure you looked at it, just from my brain, El Rancho, you're, that job's right on that border, right? So, is this portion of Reno as well? Are we, that we're pulling there in? I, I know we own, we say we own that, but don't they have stuff coming in from there? Thank you, sir. I always like when you walk up. It gets me all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council. Councilman Dare, to my knowledge, 100% of this sewer line is owned, operated, and filled up by the City of Sparks. I don't, to my knowledge, we do not have city of Reno flows coming into this line.
We didn't have to talk about what fills it up. That was not necessary.
But we're here before you because as is today, and with future development, it's very full.
I'm just kidding, but thank you. I appreciate it. Exactly. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, any questions, any further questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, looking for somebody to make a motion.
I guess I have better motion.
Okay. Mr. Lawson.
All right. Move to approve the contract for El Rancho Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project to Gerhart &amp; Berry Construction in the amount of $1,717,927.35.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second, Mr. Abbott?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Kevin. Okay, nine point three. Consideration, discussion, of possible approval of an agreement AC 5529 with the University of Nevada, Reno, for assistance in process operation testing and performance evaluation of the enhanced dissolved organic nitrogen removal pilot equipment at TIRFMA. Mr. Drinkwater?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, Michael Drinkwater, Treatment Plan Manager. You have before you today a request to approve an agreement with the University of Nevada, Reno, as well as the City of Reno. This is a joint project, to explore the, to do the pilot testing of the treatment for the dissolved organic nitrogen. This is the pilot treatment we discussed with you at the Sewer Rate Workshop last week, or two weeks ago, at the Sewer Rate Workshop, regardless of when it was. And it is necessary for the continuation for the, for the life of Tom Wharf to continue into the future, to be able to continue to treat the wastewater for this community as it grows. We, we continue to treat inorganic nitrogen to very, very low levels, but because of our very low limit, the 500 pounds a day limit, we are now looking at ways to treat the organic nitrogen. This is necessary for us to continue to grow into the future. This was bench-tested last year, again, in cooperation with the University of Nevada. It performed very well. We're looking for a pilot test because when you scale up from bench test to pilot test, there's always inefficiencies, things you didn't expect, things you didn't experiment in the laboratory, didn't, things didn't happen in the lab that are going to happen at a larger scale. So, we need to understand what those are, so that if we need, when we need to go to a full-scale design, we can, we can do a much better job with that. So, this research agreement you have before you is for that exact purpose, to do the pilot scale testing for the DON treatment. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mike, how long is the pilot program?
It's anticipated to be one year, although, again, we'll get a lot of data early on, and then, but we want to run it through the four seasons to see what, if anything, the weather does to us.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Ms. Bybee?
I just want to say how critically important this pilot is going to be with the nitrogen capacity limits that we're facing. This is one great opportunity for us to be able to remove more nitrogen, because it is taxing our, our Tom Wharf and our ability for growth in the region. So, this is a critical component. I'm excited about working with the university and their campus, and hopefully this will buy us some more, you know, some more space and some more time for growth. But I absolutely am supportive of this and hope that it works even better than we anticipate. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Abbott?
Yeah, I just comment. Once we get it up and running, can you let us know, so we can come out there and take a look at it?
Of course.
You know?
Yes, sir. We're happy to show off plan, or any part of it. So...
Sounds good.
Mr. Dare?
First want to say, this is named after Don, so we have to, it says Don Removal. So, for sure, he needs to be the first one out there, but...
I'll sign it and all.
Yeah, exactly. So, we're excited about it. I, I do want to say with what we just heard from Anya, and I'm very interested to see what, what kind of new federal finances possibly could be. They're looking at throwing our way, if that's even a thing, with what they just shared, and the thing before, for this type of thing. So...
Sure. I took notes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, looking for a motion?
I think Don has to make it.
Yes, Don. It's the Don.
Mr. Abbott?
I move to approve the agreement with the University of Nevada, Reno, for assistance in process operation, testing, and performance evaluation of the enhanced Don Removal pilot equipment at Tom Wharf in the amount of $310,381.48, with the City of Sparks portion being
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Bybee?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. Okay, nine point four. Consideration and possible approval of a tentative map request for a 32-unit multifamily residential town home project on a site 3.1 acres in size in the NUD District, Spanish Springs Town Center Plan Development Zoning District. I don't need to go any further. Ian, how are you?
Doing all right.
Ian, Ian.
Ian, yeah. I wasn't going to correct you, but...
Yeah, that's right.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of city council, Ian Cretton, Senior Planner. As stated, this is a request for a 32-unit townhome subdivision in the Spanish Springs Town Center. As you can see on the map highlighted in cyan, we have the area that is being requested to be tentative mapped. You can see that it is just east of Galleria Parkway and just a little way south of Los Altos. Access to the site will be off of Galleria Parkway and Los Altos on existing private roadways within the shopping center. So, tentative maps are a, sorry. Townhomes are a multifamily product in, by the City of Sparks zoning, and as well as the, the land use designations within the Spanish Springs Town Center Handbook. They are permitted through the conditional use permit process. A conditional use permit was approved by the Planning Commission for this product, project on September 6th. At that same meeting, the, the Planning Commission did forward a recommendation of approval for this tentative map. All streets within the plan development, or not plan development, I'm sorry, the tentative map are proposed to be private roads, as are the roads that enter into the, the, sorry, the, the shopping center now, the, the roads that branch off of Galleria Parkway and Los Altos. The landscaping within the tentative map will be maintained by the HOA, as will the roads. Some of that landscaping, which is actually on Galleria Parkway, will be maintained by the Landscape Maintenance Association for Spanish Springs Town Center as well. So, they'll be, both will be working on part of that.
The median, you said, or?
Yeah, not the median, but the, the area that's within the, the right-of-way that it butts.
Okay.
Galleria. There's a portion there that will be maintained by the landscape.
Mr. Lawson?
On your, do you apply the site triangle with, for vegetation?
Yes.
So, you won't have any shrubs that block your view to make a left turn onto Galleria?
That will be part of when we look at the final landscaping map. This is obviously this.
There's nothing more irritating than trying to sneak out there far enough without getting...
A lot of that ends up being a maintenance issue long-term, but yes, it is looked at when we look at the, the final mapping for, the final planning guides and so forth for the landscape plan.
Thank you.
Sidewalks will be provided throughout the site and will connect to the landscape for the sidewalk infrastructure that's along Galleria Parkway. And then, the proposed condition number 14 actually will also, would require the applicant to submit a cost estimate report for the maintenance repair of the private roads within the development prior to the recordation of a final map. This was required with a larger project that was recently processed, at least at the Planning Commission level. It's coming to the city council soon. They had a larger area with the private roads inside, but staff felt that that was an appropriate requirement for all subdivisions that have private roads, that they, they show us how they're going to maintain and pay for the, the maintenance and repair of those roads over the long term, at least over 30 years, showing us how that will be done. There are 12 findings associated with a tentative map, and we'll go through those now. Finding T1 requires a conformance with the zoning and the comprehensive plan. Townhomes are permitted in the Spanish Springs Town Center Handbook, subject to a conditional use permit, which was previously approved. This proposal supports Policy C4 as sidewalks are permitted throughout the site, Policy CF1 as city services are available at this location, and Policy H2 as this will provide another housing type in the area. Finding T2 requires conformity with the city's street master plan. The proposed townhome subdivision will access via existing roads, and interior streets will be private. Finding T3 requires that outside agencies that provide services related to public health be contacted for input. Those comments made by these agencies have been incorporated into the conditions of approval. Finding T4 requires that sufficient water rights be dedicated to the map. Prior to final, prior to the final map, they will be, they are or will be dedicated at the time of the final map. This is also additionally addressed through Condition 5. Finding T5 requires access to sewer. The proposed subdivision will generate 33,600 gallons of sewer per day... The proposed subdivision will generate 33,600 gallons of sewer per day. The applicant will have to provide evidence that there is adequate capacity prior to the final map. Finding T6 requires that other public agencies that would provide public services, such as schools, police, and transportation and so forth, be contacted. Washoe County School District informed the city that the proposed development would generate one elementary school student and one high school student, is what they would anticipate. The project will not generate enough additional traffic to require off-site improvements, and police and fire protection will be provided by the City of Sparks. Finding T7 requires that impacts on adjacent streets be addressed. As mentioned previously, this project will not have a significant impact on existing transportation and infrastructure. Finding T8 requires that the characteristics of the soil and land be considered. The site is not in a floodplain and is relatively flat. Final geotechnical reports will be required prior to the issuance of building permits. Finding T9 requires that comments of entities reviewing this proposal be considered. The comments received are attached to staff report and have been incorporated into the conditions of approval as appropriate. Finding T10 requires that fire protection needs for the project have been considered. This site will be served by the City of Sparks Fire Protection, for Fire Protection. Finding T11 requires that other identified impacts be considered. Landscaping and architecture for the site have been identified as other impacts. The proposed development will be required to comply with the MF2 Design Standards for Architecture and Landscaping. And then finally, finding T12 requires that proper public notice be given, and for tentative maps, this is accomplished by the posting of the agenda. As stated, Planning Commission did recommend approval, as does staff. I'm more than happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Okay, questions or comments? Seeing none, we're looking for a motion. Mr. Dare.
I move to approve a tentative map for a 32-unit multifamily residential townhome project on a site 3.1 acres in size in the NUD New Urban District, Spanish Springs Town Center Plan Development Zoning District located south of Los Altos Parkway and east of Galleria Parkway, Sparks, Nevada, adopting findings T1 through T12 and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, and subject to the conditions of approval 1 through 15 as listed in the staff report.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second. Now, Ms. Bybee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, move on to 9.5. Consideration and Possible Approval of a Tentative Map for 146-Lot Single Family Residential Subdivision on a Site 30.28 Acres in Size in the NUD Kylie Ranch North Phase 6 Zoning District located at the southeast corner of Kelly, Kylie Parkway and Windmill Farms Road. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, Members of the Council, Jonathan Cummins, Planner.
Doctor.
That's right. Thank you for pointing that out. Before you, today is a tentative map request for 146-Lot Residential Subdivision on 30.28 Acres in Kylie Ranch North Phase 6, subject properties outlined in cyan on your map. This handbook was approved by City Council in 2014, and on September 6, 2018, the Planning Commission made the following 12 findings. Finding T1 requires that the subdivision be in conformance with the comprehensive plan. The goals and policies relevant to the proposal include Policy C4, adequate pedestrian networks be provided, Policy H1, that sufficient zoning and infrastructure exist for the production of new housing within the city, Policy H2, that a variety of housing types exist to expand choices available to a diverse population, Policy CC8, that neighborhood diversity exist with varying lot sizes, and Goal CF1, that the city be able to provide acceptable service levels to the subdivision. Finding T2 requires that subdivision conform to the city's street master plan. Staff determined that this in fact does. Finding T3 requires conformance with environmental and health laws. The Planning Commission determined also that the proposed subdivision does conform. Finding T4 requires the availability of water. Developer has determined that the site will be, that water rights have been established, and that the site will be served by Truckee Meadows Water Authority, excuse me. Finding T5 requires the availability of, and access to utilities. The developers estimated that the development will generate 142,000 gallons of sewage per day, and they will provide evidence of adequate sewer capacity prior to the recordation of a final map. Finding T6 requires the availability of public services, such as school, police, and transportation. Washoe County School District has determined that there will be 33 new students at Hall Elementary, seven new students at Shaw Middle, and 14 new students at Spanish Springs High School. Additionally, the Sky Ranch Middle School is currently under construction, and will alleviate future potential for overcrowding in these, in these subdivisions in Kylie. Sparks Police Department currently provides service and will continue to do so, and the Regional Transportation Commission has provided guidelines to the developer for access and levels of service to be met. Finally, Nevada Energy will be the provider of gas and electric to the site. Finding T7 addresses the effects of the proposed subdivision on public streets and highways. Planning Commission determined that the volume of traffic can be served by existing roads and highways in the city. Finding T8 addresses the physical characteristics of land, floodplain, slope, and soil specifically. The developer will be required to provide hydrological and geotechnical reports prior to the recordation of the final map. Finding T9 requires that staff consider comments of outside agencies. We received those comments from the School District and RTC, additionally from Nevada Division of Water and the Department of Environmental Protection. Prior to the Planning Commission meeting on September 6, the Department of Environmental Protection expressed concern that we hadn't provided documentation about sewer services provided to the site, and since then, the city engineers provided, will serve letters that state that the city is in fact prepared to provide that service. Finding T10 is specific to fire protection, as I mentioned above. Sparks Fire Department currently serves the site, but it does fall outside the six-minute response time, and therefore will be served under the mutual aid agreement with Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District. Finding T11 requires that staff address other impacts. Specifically on this one, we'll, we'll be looking for common areas to be maintained by an HOA or an LMA by the developer. We'll be looking for those specifics in the, in the building permit stage, as well as at the final mapping stage. Finding T12 requires public notice be given. Posting of agendas for today's meeting and the September 6 Planning Commission meeting serve for that notice. The Planning Commission has forwarded a recommendation of approval, and I will be happy to answer questions.
Any questions or comments? You know, I have one, and I'm only bringing this up because I serve on the RTC, and we're talking about bus service. The right-of-way on, what street is that? Galleria Parkway, is that what it is? Is that the city's right-of-way? On the sidewalks, anybody? The reason I'm asking is because we're trying to upgrade all of the bus stops. I don't know, I know there's not one there now, but in the future, who would, would this, this development be asked to give up some right-of-way, or is that the city's right-of-way? Do we know? Sorry, Neil.
This is not by Galleria.
Councilman Smith, the previous item.
It's on Sparks Boulevard, isn't it?
This, this is on Kylie Ranch Parkway.
Okay.
In the east side of Kylie North.
Okay.
And in general, to answer your question, should the RTC request a bus stop? It is at the time and place of final map to work with the developer to either add to the dedicated right-of-way to accommodate that.
Okay.
Proposed bus stop location and/or get easements to have it in place if it's gonna remain in a Landscape Maintenance Association's ownership or an HOA's.
Okay.
Ownership.
That, that's all, I just, simple question, because we're, we're dealing with this now. We're trying to upgrade all the bus stops on Greg Street, and where they're standing in mud, and with just a pole and a sign, so, just file it, that's all.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Dare.
I'm prepared to make a motion, if you'd like, sir.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve a tentative map for 146-Lot Single Family Residential Subdivision on a site 30.2 Acres in size in the NUD New Urban District, Kylie Ranch North Phase 6 Zoning District located at the southeast corner of Kylie Parkway and Windmill Farms Road, Sparks, Nevada, PCN 18-0038, based on findings T1 through T12, and subject to the 15 conditions of approval as listed in the staff report.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second. Mr. Abbott. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thanks, Jonathan. Okay, we'll go to 9.6. First reading, Madam Clerk.
This is the first reading of Bill Number 2748, an ordinance by the City of Sparks to approve a development agreement with foothills at Wingfield LLC and Albert D. Sino Construction Company concerning the development of parcels totaling 65 acres in size located east of Golden Eagle Regional Park and south of Vista Boulevard, Sparks, Nevada, and other matters properly related thereto.
Okay, this is the first reading for Bill Number 2748. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular City Council meeting on Tuesday, November the 13th, 2018. 9.7, also a first reading.
First reading of Bill Number 2749, a general ordinance rezoning rural property approximately 65 acres in size and generally located east of Golden Eagle Regional Park and south of Vista Boulevard, from A5 Agriculture to SF6, single-family residential 6,000-square-foot lots, and providing other matters properly relating thereto.
Okay, this is the first reading for Bill Number 2749. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular City Council meeting on Tuesday, November 13th, 2018. 9.8, first reading, Madam Clerk.
First reading of Bill Number 2750, an ordinance amending Title 15 of the Sparks Municipal Code, Buildings and Construction, Chapter 15.01, Building Code Transition, Chapter 15.05, Administrative Code, by adopting the 2018 edition of the International Building Code, International Residential Code, International Mechanical Code, Uniform Mechanical Code, Uniform Plumbing Code, International Fuel/Gas Code, International Energy Conservation Code, International Existing Building Code, International Wildland/Urban Interface Code, International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, 2017 Edition National Electrical Code, 2018 Northern Nevada Amendments, and other matters properly related thereto, and providing other matters properly related thereto.
Okay, this is the first reading for Bill Number 2750. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular City Council meeting on Tuesday, November the 13th, 2018. And 9.9, a first reading.
First reading of Bill Number 2751, an ordinance amending Chapter 14 of the Sparks Municipal Code, Fire Prevention and Protection, to more closely conform to the 2018 International Fire Code, and to add the 2018 International Wildland/Urban Interface Code, and providing other matters properly related thereto.
Okay, this is the first reading for Bill Number 2751. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular City Council meeting on Tuesday, November 13th, 2018. Okay, we'll move on to 9.10. Consideration and Possible Counsel Direction to the City Attorney's Office whether to appeal the appropriate court for judicial review and/or seek other appropriate legal remedies regarding the regional planning governing board's October 11, 2018 denial of the City of Sparks' proposed amendment to the regional plan to relocate the existing regional utility corridor that crosses the Wild Creek Golf Course. That's good enough.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, Members of the Council, Brandon Sendall, Assistant City Attorney for the record. This agenda item is concerning the regional utility corridor that crosses the Wild Creek Golf Course property. Previously, on July 23, this council voted to sponsor an amendment to the regional plan, which would move the utility corridor from running through the middle of the Wild Creek property to the north side of the property. Once this council voted to move forward, staff went through the regional planning process to amend the corridor location. Just recently, on October 11, the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Governing Board considered the proposed amendment, and voted 5-4 in favor of amending the regional plan to move the corridor. However, you need six votes to amend the regional plan under state law. So, the 5-4 vote was a functional denial of the city's application. During the public hearing on the proposed amendment, several members of the governing board based their denials on certain concerns that may not have been appropriate grounds for denial, or that may have been beyond the scope of the agenda item that was before the governing board. These included traffic and stormwater concerns associated with a possible school to be constructed that Washoe County School District is currently in negotiations for, and concerns that a review of a future school would not go before the governing board. Sparks Planning Manager Jim Rundle, who is here today, if you have any questions, informed the governing board at the public hearing that those items were irrelevant to whether a utility corridor should be moved, and that they would be more appropriately addressed during the city's future review of an application to build a structure on the property, if and when that ever happens. So, in light of this council's prior vote on the amendment, this agenda provides the city council with notice of its right to appeal the regional planning governing board's denial by instructing the city attorney's office to file a petition for judicial review, or to instruct the city attorney's office to not take any legal action. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments? Mr. Lawson.
Well, I'm gonna, once again, I'm gonna vote against this, and the reason being is that my ward doesn't want development there. Doesn't matter if it's a school or anyone else. They want open space, and they want a golf course. And I'm gonna heed to their wishes and vote once again for relocating the corridor.
Mr. Dare.
I wanna first thank our staff for representing us well there, and I know it gets interesting and frustrating in those situations. I, I personally don't like, we made a decision as City of Sparks, and I, I'd like, I'd like that to be honored of what we want and what we ask for. And so, when I sit back and I think of this going to regional planning, and I, I think we should come back, and it should have been handled correctly, and so I, I would support us appealing, and seeing if we can move in a more, I would say, correct way. What we're looking for is the information when it comes to what's happening and that site. At this point, we have not been able to see anything, and so all we are asking for is them to move that corridor for whatever's coming. That's all we, that's, that's what we asked for them to do, and I think that's what I would like to see them do.
Ms. Bybee.
At the, I, I was in attendance, and I serve on the Regional Planning Governing Board, representing this council, and the issue that came before us was strictly moving the utility corridor. And the only project that was to come after that was the transmission line to be moved into the new corridor. I support that for a number of reasons. It was the only thing we were asked to consider, even though most of us know that the school district had asked us because of the high school, possible high school. But that's way down the road, and that wasn't our decision. I also feel that the, moving that utility corridor, and, and my reason for supporting it at Regional Planning Governing Board, I, I had multiple reasons. It was by moving that corridor north, and the transmission line, which would be the project to do also, would open up that piece of property for further development, whether that's a school, or townhouses, or homes. It opens up the future development, and it also opens up the possibility of, with development, the golf course being maintained, at least part of the golf course. So I felt it was a win-win for people who still want open space in the golf course, that it would open up also development possibilities, and the only thing that they were asking us to do at that meeting was the corridor itself and the transmission line. All of the other, any other project that would come forward later had other issues and considerations, but it wasn't what I interpreted my decision that I needed to make that day. So I, I support asking our attorney to appeal, and in the meantime, Regional Planning Governing Board could take action, but I'd like to open that door right now to just have the appeal on, available as an option for us, should no other recourse. And I would hope, through meeting with Regional Planning Governing Board, all of our members, legal, and reconsidering, that we look at the issue once again, and that we're able to resolve that, so that the city doesn't have to take action, but I would like to open the door in case we need the ability to do that at a later time.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, I'm looking for a motion. Ms. Bybee.
I move to direct the City Attorney's Office to petition the appropriate court for judicial review and other appropriate legal remedies regarding the regional planning governing board's October 11, 2018 denial of the City of Sparks' proposed amendment to the regional plan to relocate the existing regional utility corridor located on the Wild Creek Golf Course property.
We have a motion. Looking for a second, Mr. Abbott.
Second with a comment, if I may.
Okay, we have a motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, we have Mr. Lawson first.
Just, I would be cautious about filing any open-meeting law complaints, and I don't, I don't want to see that as part of this lawsuit.
That was, that wasn't part of the motion, right?
I just want to make it abundantly clear that the City of Sparks is not going down that road.
Mr. Abbott.
Yeah, I think, I also sit on the regional planning, and I hope we can come to an agreement before we have to do anything, this is, I feel like I'm looking at going after my mother in the court system. I feel, you know, I sit on this board that we're talking about, just, I hope we can figure it out, but I will be supporting it as well.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, please vote. It passes Fordham, with Mr. Lawson voting no. Thank you. Okay, 10, public hearing and action items unrelated to planning and zoning. Second reading, public hearing discussion of possible adoption of Bill Number 2747, an ordinance amending Chapter 1.12 of the Sparks Municipal Code relating to contempt of court and providing other matters properly related thereto. Allison, how are you?
I'm very well, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Allison McCormick for the record. This amendment to Chapter 1.12 of the Sparks Municipal Code would close a gap in our existing code language concerning contempt of court. Our current code provides for criminal contempt, which exists under state law, but our current code does not describe what we would call civil contempt, for lack of a better word, which is provided under state law, NRS Chapter 22. The proposed SMC 1.12, I'm sorry, proposed SMC 1.12.033 subsections A through G are taken directly from the language of NRS 22.010 regarding contempt of court. Subsections H through J of that proposed code provision are added to address situations most commonly addressed, most commonly encountered by our municipal court. So adding that section would add to the list of conduct that can be punished as a civil contempt, whereas a criminal contempt, which our code already addresses, would be addressed through a different procedure. SMC 1.12035, if added, would clarify the procedures and penalties applicable to conduct that falls within that civil contempt provision. And in order to close these gaps in our code, and to address and clean up a couple of other matters in that chapter, such as adding or maximum penalties to the provision regarding minimums or maximum state law penalties, we'll, we'll clean up our code and improve it and make it more in line with state law.
Okay, are there any questions or comments? Okay, this is a public hearing item, anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for a motion. Mr. Lawson.
I move to adopt Bill Number 2747, an ordinance amending Chapter 1.12 of the Sparks Municipal Code relating to contempt of court and providing other matter properly related thereto.
Okay, we have a motion, look for a second, Mr. Dare.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Last one in, okay, there we go. Passes unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to 11.1, second reading, public hearing discussion of possible adoption of Bill Number 2745, an ordinance amending Section 20.05.013 of the Sparks Municipal Code to define an aggrieved person for purposes of planning and zoning appeals.
Thank you. Again, for the record, Allison McCormick, Assistant City Attorney. This bill would add a definition to our zoning code of aggrieved person, so describing who can appeal from a planning commission and city council decision. Currently, our code does not define who is aggrieved for that purpose. The definition that is proposed in this amendment is taken directly from City of Reno's Municipal Code and is well-supported by case law. That provision has been in City of Reno's code since at least 2011, and possibly since 2003. And like I said, that's well in line with case law regarding standing to appeal. In addition, this amendment would remove a 30-day hearing deadline that exists in our code, that does not exist in state law. State law requires that when a decision is appealed to the city council on a land use matter, that the city council make a decision within 60 days of a complete appeal being filed. Our code currently also requires you to hold a hearing within 30 days. That requirement isn't anywhere in state law, only the 60-day decision requirement is required by state law, and that 30-day deadline could really set staff up for failure, given the planning commission meeting schedule versus the city council meeting schedule. So removing that 30-day deadline will clean that up and enable staff to better comply with our code while still complying with state law.
Does our code ask for, if you don't have standing on a grievance? Like, it affects me, because I live in Minnesota, but I don't like the project?
Right now, our code does not. It says that a person who is aggrieved by a decision may appeal, but it, our code doesn't define who is aggrieved. So we could be in a situation where we're arguing whether our person has standing or not. The definition that's been proposed, there could be situations where there are still arguments about whether a particular person has standing in a particular case, but adding a definition will at least close some of that gap.
Okay, are there any other questions, comments? Okay, this is a public hearing, I'll open up the public, anybody in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council, I'm looking for motion. Mr. Abbott.
I move to adopt Bill Number 2745, an ordinance amending Section 20 dash, or 0.05.013 of the Sparks Municipal Code to define an aggrieved person for purpose of planning and zoning appeals and conform appeal timelines to Nevada law, and providing other matters properly related thereto.
We have a motion, looking for a second, Ms. Bybee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, okay. 11.2, second reading, public hearing discussion and possible adoption of Bill Number 2746, an ordinance amending Chapters 1.10 and 20.05 of the Sparks Municipal Code.
Thank you. Again, for the record, Assistant City Attorney Allison McCormick. This amendment addresses two separate provisions of our code, one in Chapter 1.10, and the other in Chapter 20.05. Both have to do with publication of notices and public hearings. First, as to SMC 1.10.010, that provision requires a public hearing under certain circumstances that are not required by state law. One is a public hearing prior to approval of an agreement with a term extending beyond the terms of the present city council. Another is prior to the lease, sale, or license of any property owned or leased to the city. And neither of those requirements are imposed by state law or our charter. Excuse me. SMC 1.10.010 subsection B allows the city council to direct the city clerk to give notice of a proposed lease, sale, or license to property owners within 300 feet. Not only is this not required by state law, but allowing council the discretion to give those notices in some cases, while not in others, really creates the potential for confusion. Finally, subsection C of that SMC 1.10.010 states that specific notice requirements of any state law still apply, so it's kind of superfluous, because those apply whether we'd like them to or not, regardless of any contrary provision of our code. Therefore, the city county, or the city attorney's office recommends repealing that section in its entirety. In addition, SMC 20.05.001, and the table associated with that section, Table 20.05-2, describe the processes required for various land use decisions. That table indicates that notice of a request for a tentative map should be published in a newspaper. Typically, we only publish notices in newspapers for items that require a public hearing. Publication or a public hearing aren't required by state law, and a public hearing isn't required for a tentative map under our code. So, removing that requirement from that table in our zoning code would bring the tentative map process more in line with our other zoning code processes.
Okay, questions or comments? Okay, this is a public hearing, I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for action, looking for a motion. Mr. Dare.
I move to adopt Bill Number 2746, an ordinance amending Chapters 1.10 and 20.05 of the Sparks Municipal Code regarding publication of certain notices in public hearings and providing other matters properly related thereto.
Okay, we have a motion, looking for a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
I don't wet your fingers.
I know, I don't know what I gotta do. Okay, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Allison. Okay, number 12, comments. I'll open up the public comment period, anybody in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Bill, come on down.
We knew Bill waited around.
I know. Welcome, Bill.
You're waiting for me.
Good to see you.
The only question I have is, I think we're gonna be in trouble. Did you listen to the person with the green hair today?
Oh, during public comment, yeah.
It was blue there.
Was it blue?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I guess I'm colorblind. Anyway, I think we're in trouble, I think we're gonna end up with a lawsuit. And I hope we don't, but it just sounds like it's gonna happen, so be prepared, that's all I have to say to you folks. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Any comments from Mayor, City Council, and City Manager? Mr. Dare.
I just want to invite anybody out there, on November 8, we have, it's pretty exciting for the Nevada Veterans Memorial, and it's, it's a memorial being built here in Sparks for the whole state, and so if you're interested, and you're a veteran or just supporting veterans, you can go to nvmp.info and come out, and it's gonna be a great time, and we have great guest speakers and all that good stuff, so come and enjoy, you're invited.
Okay, anybody else? Ms. Bybee.
I just want to give a big shout-out to everyone who volunteered yesterday with Pumpkin Palooza. Tracy, if you can tell Francine and your Parks and Rec Department, phenomenal, phenomenal setup, great day, bigger crowds every year, I don't know what your numbers are, you might not know yet, but the weather couldn't have been nicer, and between Pumpkin Derbies and the, all the events for the kids and entertainment, and the amount of people downtown, it was great to see, despite the middle of our construction. We had, Victorian Square was full, and people enjoyed it, and it's a great family event, which is really what the City of Sparks is all about, so thank you to all those who made that happen, for a great day, and encourage you, if you didn't come this year, make sure you guys are there next year, it was awesome. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Seeing none, and without objection, we are adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of Monday, October 22, with a roll call.
Chairperson Bybee.
Here.
Agency members Abbott.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here. Oh, he was here.
Martini, absent. Dare.
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams.
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Driscoll.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Thank you. Number three, public comment, do I have any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to item number 4.1, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Dare.
I move to approve the agenda.
Agency member Abbott.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, please vote. Motion carries with four votes. Move to item number 5.1, consideration discussion, possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of September 24, 2018. Do I have any corrections, additions, or a motion to approve? Agency member Abbott.
Move to approve.
Do I have a second? Agency member Dare.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, please vote. Motion carries with four votes. Item number 6.1, consideration and possible acceptance of the reports of the claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period of September 6, 2018 through October 3, 2018. Do I have a motion to approve? Agency member Dare.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve, do I have a second? Agency member Abbott.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion carries with four votes. Item number 7, 7.1, comments from the public, do I have any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll close comments from the public. Comments from the agency and Chief Administrative Officer? Any comments? Seeing none, move to adjourn. This motion, I guess I don't need, but we'll just adjourn, thank you.